Yeah. Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Thomas with TR Design Group. We're here for the second agenda item for the CIC church.
Hello.
Hello. Yeah, but Brian Goodley's sitting right over there, too. Just on camera, Laura. Yeah.
This one, my muting your mic until your item comes up? On the CIC church, can you mute your mic until your item comes up?
I'm sorry, I couldn't under- I think that's our cue to start. Nicole, do you want to, can I go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:05? Are we ready?
Okay, yes. Give us just a second. We're going to do the live stream. Okay, we're good to go. Yes, you can go ahead and call behind the meeting.
All right, call to order, the regular planning commission for October 13th, 2020 at 6:05. And can we please have a roll call?
Just for the order of the meeting, if your item is not up, could you mute, please? And then we'll do roll call. Commissioner St. Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Lindgrens? Can you hear us, Commissioner? He's present. I'm going to mark him present while we work.
He's muted.
Right, Chairman Stevens?
Here.
And Chairman Tinker is absent at the moment. If you'd like to do the pledge of allegiance, it's next.
All right. Commissioner St. Martin, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Thank you, Commissioner. Next is the approval or adjustments to the agenda? Are there any?
I'll move to approve.
Sorry, this was the, I'm just going off the agenda approval or adjustments. Are there any approvals or adjustments to the agenda? Is that correct?
Sorry.
Staff has no adjustments to the agenda.
Okay. And do we have to go over the conflict of interest disclosure?
Yes. If anybody has a conflict of interest with any of my items, please speak so now.
No conflicts. No conflict.
Great. And this is the public comment period on any items not on the agenda. They have three minutes to speak and must fill out the public comment form or email the clerk. Are there any public comments?
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Commissioner Kalindres. I might have a conflict of interest. I was currently muted.
Commissioner, can you state what item your conflict is with?
Uh, the-
Item one?
Second item. No, yeah, the first item.
Okay.
But the, it's just CU 2020-048, the conditional use permit for the planning-
For the residential care facility?
Yeah, the residential care facility.
And will you be recusing from the item?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Kalindres, can you state what the potential issue is for us as well?
My place of business is like 300-
Did you hear me?
From, yes. My, my business is like about under 300 meters from the, the location.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Patterson, just for clarification, just for how this Zoom meeting works, is he able to just stay on mute and not participate so that he's not kicked out of the meeting?
Well, if it were a physical meeting, he would need to leave the room. And so I think if he mutes, that is fine because he can't have any influence over the outcome of the hearing if he does that.
I just checked with IT and they said they can actually just put him in a waiting room.
There you go. That's perfect.
Put him in the waiting room and then Mr. Lindres will just put you in the waiting room and we'll bring you back when we're on the next item.
All right. So no public comments, correct?
No public comments for this portion.
All right. It looks like Commissioner Chair Tinker is present.
We don't have anyone online for this portion of the meeting, right?
No, we do not.
Right. Should we wait for Chairman Tinker to get situated? Hello?
Yeah. Yes, you went ahead and started the meeting. Okay. I do apologize. At the last minute, I had to have one of my vehicles towed.
Oh, no.
Same time, I was inundated with phone calls about the Apple fire. So I do apologize for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I almost got through one item here. So an actual vote, but you stepped in, so I'd like to turn the meeting back over to you.
No, if you're doing good, go for it, bud.
Well, I at least wanted to do one item and feel good, you know?
Where were we at?
Approval of the minutes, sir.
I apologize. I was at the last minute, having to have my vehicle towed. And I've been dealing with the Apple fire issues this afternoon. So I do apologize. We're on it.
We're on item one.
Item one, approval of the minutes. Okay, so we're on item one, approval of the minutes. And like before, I, I think we all know that we're all going to be selected to speak and not everybody speaks at one time. So on approval of the minutes, I reckon I will go to Patrick or old St. Martin for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, Nathan, second. So we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes for September 8th meeting.
Commissioner St. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindgrens?
Yes.
And Chairman Stevens?
Yes.
And Chairman Tinker?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to item number two, conditional use permit, CUP 2020-0048, the variance of the 2020-0079, which is a request for the planning commission to consider the operation of the 31-bed residential care facility serving as a drug rehabilitation facility within an existing 11,007 or 90 square foot two-story building and a variance requesting the parking requirements located at this location. Before we get too far, I want to, I want to make sure that we understand we're dealing with two items here. First of all, the, the ability to have a 31-bed residential care facility serving as a drug rehabilitation facility within that facility is pretty much within the zoning and approval from staff.
Correct. The use is allowed within the zoning code, subject to a conditional use permit.
Okay, the second part, and before I get to staff, the variance requesting a reduced parking requirements located at and consideration of the environmental exemption for Santa Segua guidelines, etc. I'm going to turn this to staff right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. City staff received applications for the conditional use permit and variance for property located on the northwest corner of Sixth Street and California Avenue on May 12th of this year. We did place a public notice in the press enterprise and we did notify property owners within 300 feet of this public hearing tonight. Staff had received one comment from the public regarding the proposed project that will be written to the record by the clerk. So as I mentioned, the municipal code does allow chemical dependency clinics and transitional housing in the commercial general zone, subject to a conditional use permit. Property is owned, commercial general, and has a general plan land use designation of general commercial. So the north and west are existing single-family homes that are in the commercial general zone with the same land use designation. These existing residents are what are called pre-existing non-conforming uses. To the west is Rocky's Pawn Shop and existing single-family residences that are in the general commercial and single-family residential zones with similar general plan land use designations on those properties. And the Ramona's Restaurant parking lot is located to the south and is on commercial manufacturing with the general commercial land use designation. The subject site is 237 acres and it's currently developed with an existing 1,790 square foot two-story building that county records show was constructed in 1925 and annexed into the city limits in 1993. Site is currently improved with curb gutter, parkway sidewalks, and mature street trees. Based on staff's research, we were able to see that previous uses included a hotel and a women and children's shelter. The applicant is proposing the operation of a 31-bed, over 19-bedroom drug rehab facility. The operation provides a detoxification process for alcohol and drug abuse supervised by a medical team 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Treatment period range from 21 to 28 days and include group, one-on-one, and individual therapy sessions. All meals will be catered to the site. And staff is broken down into three shifts, one being in the morning, one in the evening, and one overnight. The maximum number of employees on a shift is 10, and that is on the AM shift. Patients are not permitted to drive vehicles to this location. They are picked up by staff members either at their home or from a local airport. And based on the type of treatment, new visitors are permitted at the facility. So the project that's proposed requires a total of 39 parking spaces, and that is based on the number of sleeping units. So it's not the beds, but how many bedrooms there are, which are 19. And the square footage, the office space. As I mentioned, this is an existing building, existing developed site that currently has 12 parking spaces. So the applicant is requesting relief from the parking requirement of 39 parking spaces to the current 12 spaces that are available on the site. The applicant has provided a letter to justify the request that is attached to your staff report. The justification states that the clients are prohibited from driving vehicles to the facility as well as visitors are prohibited from visiting the site. And they did indicate that their staff levels are below what the existing parking is, so they feel that the site provides adequate parking. The parking spaces are located on the west side of the building via a 20-foot alley that runs between Sixth Street and California. The applicant is also providing, proposing minor modifications to the building that include the installation of foam trimmer on the top of the building, removal of the existing first-floor overhang, construct popouts at the south of the building, at the middle and south entrances, install two-foot stone veneers upon the side of the building, including the southwest and southeast corners, and replaciate the entire building. This project does meet the criteria of a Class 1 existing facility categorical exemption under the CEQA guidelines and has been processed as such. So the building, the municipal code does state that the planning commission is empowered to grant, deny, grant and deny conditional use permit and variance application for projects and to impose reasonable conditions upon granting of such permits. Therefore, at this time, staff is recommending that the planning commission conduct a public hearing. And then there are three options to either approve conditional use permit 2020-0048 and variance 2020-0079, subject to the attached conditions of approval and direct staff to prepare a notice of exemption for the applicant to record with the county clerk. Option two is to deny the conditional use permit and variance, or option three is to require the applicant to modify the project and return it to the planning commission at a future date. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicants are also available for questions.
Okay, you've heard the staff's report. I'm going to start with Patrick. You got any questions?
Looks like Patrick's offline.
Okay, Paul. Okay, no, I'm here. Had to unmute myself. Everything was answered in the staff report, so thank you. No questions at this time.
Wait a minute, who am I talking to?
This is Commissioner Stevens, Patrick.
Okay. Okay, so Patrick, you're okay with what's been answered?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to go there to Commissioner St. Martin.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the operation of a facility like this. What, how are the patients monitored? Are they allowed to leave the facilities? Or are they in lockdown for the 21 days? And is there adequate security to to facilitate a lockdown if necessary?
Okay, what I want to do is make sure we understand here that we're only dealing with the approval of the facility and approval of the parking variance. The facility itself is governed by state law, so we have to move on to either we're going to, we're going to approve in a variance or we're going to object to the variance. But as far as the facility itself, that's governed by state law. And I, I have a flag from the planning commission, so the planner, so tell me.
Well, it would make a difference to me to get an answer to the questions I just posed, whether I'm going to approve it or not.
Let me ask the planning staff.
The use is subject to a conditional use permit, so that's under your purview. So the, the operation is subject to planning commission review, and I don't want Bob Anderson to add anything to that.
Okay, Paul.
Yeah, um, yeah. Can you hear me? I would agree with Commissioner Tinker's comments, if you can hear me.
Yes.
I would agree with Commissioner Tinker's comments. The type of facility that we're talking about is one that is for the rehabilitation of people who have some sort of substance abuse issue. I, the, the individuals are not inmates, they're not prisoners. There's no issue implicit in their condition which would make them a threat to the safety of the surrounding community. And as Commissioner Tinker mentioned, the facility operations are licensed and monitored by the state, I believe, Department of Health Services. Our focus is on the use. Individuals in this category who are in need of substance abuse are considered to be disabled persons. And so it is important that we not look at issues that might be discriminatory towards these individuals. So I would agree with Commissioner Tinker's comments. My, I prefaced my question with, I don't understand the operation, so I was trying to get some feel for the, the way this operates. I have no problem, but there are neighbors around there that-
Oh.
Yes.
Hang on a second. That was the comment from the city attorney.
Yeah, I know who it was. I was watching him.
Yeah, but you got to understand that what I'm looking at up here, I can't sometimes tell who was talking.
Yeah.
I, I want to hear your comments, Paul, and then I want to move to the other commissioner. So Paul, voice-
No, I'm done. I've got my, I got my answers. I'm good.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay, Nathan?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Um, you know, kind of first off, you know, anything that, you know, we can do to help, help people, I think is good and they're kind of more normalize the rehabilitation process rather than victimize, I think is a good idea. However, we do have an obligation to, you know, the neighbors and so forth, to make sure that the use is compatible as far as the operations go as we're serving the conditions. And, you know, so some of the questions I have, you know, are specifically related to operations, you know, maybe, you know, when, is there a, you know, is there a bedtime or curfew time? Is it an open door policy where members are able to come and go as they please, as if it was a multifamily project, you know, or apartment or a hotel? You know, those are kind of the clarifications that I was kind of looking for. Just to get a better understanding of what the operation is and what the potential impacts could be to the surrounding and the existing community around it.
Mr. Chairman, to catch up to speed, Commissioner Kalindres has any conflict with this item, so he's in the waiting room. He won't be participating in this item.
I want, I want to ask him. Christina had to respond to Nathan's questions.
So I, if the commission wants to go through their rounds of making their comments, and then the applicant, Mr. Alzate, is available when he does actually want to speak to some of the things that you guys have brought up. So Chairman Tinker, if you want to just continue through, if you have any comments as well, then we can open the public hearing and allow the applicant to speak. And I think he'll be able to, you know, answer or, or speak to some of the things that have been brought up already.
Okay, thank you.
And then I, Mr. Tinker, before, we want to add a couple other items that, you know, hopefully the applicant or staff will be able to speak to as well. You know, I understand the, the statement that, you know, the, the, I don't know, you know, what the proper terminology is, if we call them patients or not in a facility like this. But if the, the users of this facility are brought here by staff members, they don't have access to cars, I, I understand that. And that the staffing requirements are, are such that there, there's probably not a need for, you know, the full 40 parking stalls that are noted per code. I do have concerns about shift change, you know, because at some point there will be almost 20 people there along with vehicle deliveries, as the statements of operations state that all meals will be catered. So there's going to be delivery vehicles for that, you know, the operations when passengers are brought in. And if the parking for the facility is really adequate for, for the use and the intended operation of it, that's where the biggest of my concern is I don't want to put a undue burden on the, you know, limited amount of parking we have throughout the downtown core as a whole. So those are items I'd like to hear from the, from the applicant as well.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Stevens. And I'm going to open a public hearing in a minute, but Commissioner Stevens, do you have any questions for staff?
No, not at this time.
Okay, and at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing at 6:23 PM. I'm going to open up the public hearing on the initial use permit, CUP 2020-0048 and variance 2020-079.
Chairman, I do have a written comment that was sent in earlier. I'll read it aloud. This is from Valerie Monroe. She states, "The applicant has currently been operating the proposed property since May of 2020, and our family does not have concerns with this particular company or their drug rehab services. However, we would hope that the city and the local police department would provide ample and appropriate oversight regarding a possible increase in crime and relitering. Thank you for your time and consideration." Then I can check and see if we have anyone on the line to speak as well.
Okay, why don't you check on that, please?
Do we have anyone on the line that needs to contribute?
No, not for this item.
Any other public comments?
I have no other public comments.
Commissioner, Chairman Tinker, would you like to hear from the applicant at this time?
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, you know.
My name is Damon George Los. I'm also with Brian Alzate as one of the owners of the facility. Just to introduce myself.
Okay.
And I'm Terry Strom. I'm the talent consultant that's been helping through this process and working with Christina and Carolyn. You've done a great job. Thank you.
It's nice meeting you guys.
Okay, commissioners, you have two of the owners or individuals involved in the comments. So if you have anything to ask them.
I would go ahead and-
Sure. So my name is Brian Alzate. I run and operate United Recovery Project. We've been in business for five years. We have a facility in Florida. Just so everyone knows, this is not our first facility. I am in recovery myself. I've been clean for over 12 years and have dedicated my life to helping addicts. So I know that a lot of people kind of get scared about drug rehabs in their area. This is not a lockdown facility. This is a private facility. We cater to people that are willing and voluntarily. So just so everyone knows that the people that are in treatment are there voluntarily. They can leave at any time. We do ask that they don't bring their own cars because it's the only thing that we can have to try to block them from leaving. And it's a big trigger for them to have their cars available on property. And if they do want to leave, we ask that they call a family member and a family member come pick them up. I would probably say that it happens once every two months. But it's not a lockdown facility. People are there voluntarily with change. So right now we have a 21-bed facility in West Palm, and we have about six parking spots. We do make it work. So let's say we have three techs on shift. When there is a shift exchange, the whole staff doesn't shift at the same time. So if the techs are working from nine to five, they'll have their shift exchange at five, and the other three techs will come and relieve them. And then at 5:30 or will have the shift exchange with the nurses. During the day, I don't see there being any more than 10 staff members. During second shift, which for us is four to 12, there probably won't be any more than eight. Free extra parking spaces for a delivery for catering or, or anything that anyone would have to happen. We do have extra spaces. And then for overnight, there's only going to be about seven staff members on the overnight shift. The busiest shift is the first shift because the doctor's there, the RMP is there, and there's nurses there. But other than that, I do think that having 12 spaces leaves us two ones during the day, and it's more than sufficient. And I'm fully confident that we can operate the facility with those types of spaces.
And Brian, just to clarify your point, even though we are not a lockdown facility, the clients are- the clients are not allowed to leave the premises while they're in our care. So though we cannot forcefully block them from leaving the premises, if they do choose to leave the premises, they're not going to be in our care any longer. So it's not like these clients are going to be going to the grocery store or the gas station or anything like that. They're, they're not in a lockdown facility, but they are not allowed to leave our facility while they remain in our care.
Okay, commissioners, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Stevens. You have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, the, thank you, Mr. Alzate, for that explanation on the transition of the, the shifts there, shift change. So the one note I did take is if the client does bring a car, checks in, you know, you request that they don't have a car, but how would you, how do you handle that? Just so you know, you can't just walk in and come to treatment. We have a pre-assessment process. So if someone walked in and said, hey, I have a million dollars, need to go to treatment, I'll pay cash, like, it's not happening today. One, we need to do a pre-assessment over the phone. We need to make sure that you're medically and medically and clinically appropriate to come to treatment, that you're stable. We need to know what type of medications you're on. We try to contact the family. Oftentimes, we have to do a pre-approval with insurance to make sure that insurance will cover their stay there. So no one, we don't take people from the street that are just walking in. I could say in five years, that's never happened. We do a lot of online marketing and I would say ninety-nine percent of our clients, probably ninety percent of our clients are fly-ins from out of state. So a lot of them are flying in from out of state and they're getting picked up at the airport. If they are local, we will say, hey, after the assessment, if you're approved, we will have a behavioral health technician pick you up in a safe area and bring you here. And if you want an AMA, your family member would have to call and approve and say that you're willing to leave against medical advice and they can come and pick you up. And it's a, it's a five-minute process for them to leave. Yeah, so, you know, it offers to put people at ease that, you know, not just anybody could come to our facility. You know, we do, we are a dual diagnosis facility, but we cannot take anyone that has auditory hallucinations. We don't take any high-site clients. We don't take people that can't bathe themselves, anything like that. So even though we are able to handle higher levels of care, we normally don't really take a lot of high-risk patients. And it's mainly people with, with insurance or with family that's able to help them out. I do wanna say that we brand ourselves as a luxury, high-end facility. We do yoga, meditation, Reiki, acupuncture, massage therapy, even as far as, you know, karate classes on the weekends, one-on-one clinical sessions with a therapist. But it is geared to, you know, private health insurance type of clients. Thank you for that detailed explanation. I think that really turned into that, a sort of a process of understanding how the facility works out. Mr. St. Martin, you know, was, was questioning, so that, that was really, you know, educational. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other comments from staff? Or commissioners?
I just wanted to say that helped me understand the operation and I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Here's, here's, here's the thing we need to understand before we get too far. And I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna close the public hearing before we.
Commissioner Tinker, I had, I had a couple of questions. This is Commissioner Smith.
Yeah.
So I, you know, thank you for the explanation on how it works. You know, so it's a voluntary rehab program. They are requested to stay on site. Are you intending to kind of utilize the open space you have in the back for some, you know, activities or, you know, outdoor opportunities or?
Yeah, absolutely. So even though it's a lockdown facility, it's not an indoor-out lockdown facility. You know, I'm hoping to have some type of recreational area. I would imagine people don't wanna be inside all day. We will have outside groups and meditation outside. I don't know how much space we have out there. We're hoping for a basketball court. You know, if we're able to make a basketball court, we'll probably have a little half, little court back there. But, um, yeah, they're absolutely allowed in that outdoor area.
So my, my concern is, you know, with the, making sure that it is compatible with the neighborhood around, you know, for as far as uses go. There's one little house that's right there. And, you know, I apologize if I missed into the conditions, but is there a condition to replace that wood fence with a block wall?
Yeah, so we are gonna raise the outside wall. So the wall will be raised and there will be an extra fence outside.
Okay.
Just because, just like you're concerned about the residents, we're also concerned about our patients and HIPAA. So we don't want people able to see who's in treatment or take a picture of them or anything like that either, you know?
Okay, okay.
We're replacing the entire wall in the back there on the side and then also carrying it around through the front, creating a nice archway. It's gonna be, the, the renovation on the building inside and out is, is over six, or over seven figures. We plan to make it, you know, a state-of-the-art, like, really, really great facility that's a yeah, very, very beautiful facility for, uh, because we know we're right there in center of downtown. And like Brian said, we're gonna be, uh, we market ourselves as a, as a luxury rehabilitation center. So the building will, will look as such.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners?
I have one, Mr. Chair. For, I know for Mr. Alzate, you said, you know, HIPAA and privacy and that sort of thing. I know, like, hospitals are designated on flight maps for no-fly zones for drones and recreation and that sort of thing. Are these types of facilities also designated, you know, or do you have to apply to the FAA to have it designated as a privacy no-fly zone? We are a private facility, so I would imagine that if you were like a government facility, that would have. I've never heard of that. Would you not have to abide by that at all?
Yeah, the no-fly zones, all of that is not a fair amount of what we're dealing with right now. We're dealing with two things. One, the approval of the facility as a drug rehab, rehab center. And the other is the parking variance. That's, that's where we need to concentrate in our effort, okay? Do I have any other comments from the commissioner? Okay, well, I have a couple of comments before I get to staff. One, I don't see anything in the report that shows that the facility is a fully alarmed facility because it's been abandoned in the rehab. And I don't see anything in the report that requires fire sprinkler assistance for that self, that facility.
Can I speak, can I speak to that, sir, when you get a chance?
Yeah, just saying, that facility was abandoned for a long time. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Strom, yeah.
Oh, yes, we've had in-depth conversations with the fired, the fire marshal and they have, they have many different conditions that go along with this that they're gonna have to get approval of, of the fire alarm, of the fire sprinklers, everything to big it up the code. And so we've had significant conversations with the fire marshal for this particular project. And it all has to be, you know, we have to get that approved through the building permit process and get it approved by the fire marshal.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes.
I just wanted, wanted to add, Commissioner, that the wall that was discussed by the applicant is not included as a condition of approval. So if the commission decides to approve the project, I would recommend that we add a condition regarding the construction of the wall. And if they are proposing outdoor activities such as a basketball court, that we add a condition that limits the hours in which those can be utilized to help protect the residents that are adjacent to them.
Okay, did the commissioners copy that?
Copy.
Okay, I, I, I have a problem with the staff report. When they refer, refer to items on the west, the single-family residence, general, commercial, and commercial general, that's inappropriate because the items to the west is a trophy shop and a battery store. How do we come up with that?
The west of it, on the, on the west side of the alley is the single-family residential?
No, it's not. You better go take a look. The bottom line is the west side of that alley belongs to a trophy shop and next to it's a battery shop. I don't, I don't know what direction you guys are using, but, but the east and everything's pretty good. But the west, the single-family residence is not an issue. The city through the west is a Walmart unique trophy shop and next to that is the battery barn.
There, there's also two residences that are behind those two shops that are west of this park.
No, but they're behind them, not to the west. So I would suggest that the staff report be correct. Okay, any other comments from staff? Any other comments from the commissioners?
None.
I, you know, just before, before we head into, you know, discussion, a motion, you know, I think, you know, a couple of points were brought up. The, the, the first being that to make the outdoor operations subject to the condition of approval with staff review of, you know, hours of operations and so forth. So it's consistent with the residential use that the do surround a couple portions of the property. So I would like to, as part of whatever motion is made, to have that statement included as part of the conditions of approval. Another one would be, you know, a condition to, you know, rehab the wall around it, you know, as, as the applicant said, is their intent. I'd go ahead and just document that and have that as a condition of approval. In general, the, the biggest concern I have with this project is, you know, how does it fit in, you know, kind of with the vision of we, that we have for Sixth Street? And how the retail operations use are used, there's a very limited amount of parking we have on Sixth Street. And the, the operational statement that came from the applicant, you know, indicates that, you know, all the parking is gonna be able to be handled on site. And, you know, as such, if we are looking to move forward this project, I would also recommend that we add a condition of approval that the staff shall utilize twelve parking spaces. And, you know, you know, as far as operations for any of the patients that are there or staff members that, you know, are not using it, they are limited parking we have in, in the region. So we can continue to promote some of the retail walkability goals that we do have for Sixth Street as it develops.
So now, Commissioner St. Martin?
I have no questions.
Mr. Stevens?
No further questions.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Actually, I'm not gonna close the public hearing. One of the things that I'm gonna talk about is I agree with Commissioner Smith. We need to think about this reduced parking as a variance. I just want you to think about that. And, and staff's thought about the wall and additional recreation facilities. So I'm gonna close the public hearing at six forty-six. And I'm gonna go to Commissioner Smith for a motion. You're on the, you're on the, you're on the deal here.
You're putting me on the spot. What was that? Uh, passed for now. I'm, I'm still kinda mulling on this a little bit.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Stevens for a motion to, we've got two items here. Remember, we got the variance to, for the drug rehab facility. And then we have the variance for the parking. So I'm, I'm going to Commissioner Stevens.
I'd like to move approval of the conditional use permit twenty twenty zero zero four eight and the variance twenty twenty zero zero seven nine.
Okay, I have a motion to approve conditional use C U P twenty twenty zero zero four eight and variance twenty twenty zero seven nine. Do I have a second?
Would this be, Commissioner Stevens, would this be subject to the additional conditions that we spoke up?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir, yes.
So Nathan, now's the time to put your second in there with the conditional use.
I, I, I'd like, boy, I know. Trying to think of it from a whole bunch of different points of view here. On, on this and, you know, understanding that the applicant's looking to make a major investment. Like I said, the, the parking is a concern and, you know, if, if, if there is a, a problem, if the staffing levels exceed what the expectation is, you know, what do, you know, as a conditional use permit, we do have the ability to, to bring that back to the public hearing. Verify that I'm correcting that statement. Yes?
Yes, sir. Commission has, in the past, for other conditional use permits, required a periodic review. And sometimes that's at six months, sometimes that's at twelve months, depending on what the commission's preference is. So we, we have included that in the past with other conditional use permits for staff to set a calendar reminder to bring back the item for an update or review of the C U P at the commission. At that point in time, we could review if there have been any issues with parking, if there's been any calls for service, if there's been any resident complaints, et cetera. And, and we can do that if the commission so chooses to request staff add a condition like that in.
I think, to me, that brings, it, it makes it easier for me. It gives me more, a higher level of confidence in, in approving this, knowing, you know, that there's, there's a stated interest on the city's part to, you know, make sure that we are still able to fulfill the goal for the rest of the corridor. And on the applicant's part, with the investments they're looking put in to continue to operate within the, the guidelines that we have there. And I would feel comfortable making a second on that motion if we, with the, uh, a return date for twelve months or in periodic review.
Condition number eleven does require a twelve-month review of the operation.
Perfect, okay. So, um, yeah, I mean, based on the operations, the stagger, the stagger shift change, I think that's really gonna be what the key is on that. You know, I know a lot of hospitals just get overwhelmed at those times. They get crushed. So, you know, seeing that, you know, as part of what the, the statement was by the applicant, you know, I appreciate that. Yeah, I'll second with the, the added conditions.
Okay, I wanna, I, I'm gonna talk to the attorney here because I, I think what we may have here is we need a motion to approve, and the attorney, jump in here and help me. We need to approve the first C U P for the drug rehab center. And then we have a second variance for the parking.
Right, so. I believe there was a motion made to approve.
There's a motion.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So you have to, a motion to approve the C U P and the variance for the parking, subject to the condition that the matter be brought back to the planning.
That's correct.
That, at, at the twelve months, the planning commission would have the ability to impose additional conditions to address any issues that arise during the one-year period.
Okay. All right, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're on sync here.
Yes, I, I agree. That's an appropriate way to handle the approval under these circumstances. I think that's what other planning commissions do in similar situations.
Nathan, I, you've got your motion out there. I would like to see us make sure that the fire alarm system and fire sprinkler systems are a requirement. I know that Terry said, well, they're working with the city, but I wanna see that as a requirement. So can we modify that, your, your motion?
I'd say, you know, that goes back to Commissioner Stevens then, if he wants to modify his motion to include the fire sprinklers since the, the return to commission is already listed within that, within, within it.
Also, the Department of Health requires that we have it, just so you guys know.
Right.
So, Mr. Stevens, Commissioner Stevens, can we kind of modify it to make sure that we got that safety stuff in there?
Absolutely. As far as the conditions, trying to go down to that area, but. of, of the fire suppression, but yes, I'd like to modify the, the motion.
Okay, I have a modified motion from Commissioner Stevens to approve CUP 2020-0048 and variance 2020-0079 with conditions. And Commissioner Smith, you were gonna, you were.
I second, uh, yes.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve CUP 2020-0048, variance D0 2020-079 with additional conditions to staff.
Okay, real quick, you ready?
Please.
Commissioner State Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Stevens?
Yes.
Governor Pinker?
Yes.
All right, before, Mr. Stevens, before I move on, can I make one final statement?
I don't know who's talking.
Is this Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith, can I make one final statement?
Can I understand? I've got, I can't see, so.
That's fine. Uh, you know, just to the, just to the applicant, uh, you know, we you know, grateful for the rehab that you guys are looking for in that building. It's been um needing work for some time. Uh, you know, as, as you kind of alluded to, uh, we do have some pretty grand plans for Sixth Street of what we would do want to see on there. And we, you know, hope that you guys are going to be able to continue to be a portion of that for uh some time to come. I definitely appreciate your, you know, any ongoing assistance in helping us to see the vision that we do have on Sixth Street, um, you know, for now and in, into the future and, you know, hopefully into a very successful facility. Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, we, we, uh, we submitted, um our plans and, uh, yeah, we have a, we have a beautiful design that, uh, it's gonna be a great addition to the community. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be really beautiful.
Okay, are we, um, completed with this one? Okay, and I'm gonna move on to item number three. Plot Plan PP2017-0017, a request for a planning commission consideration of a plot plan for the construction operation of an 8,600, 1,900 square foot church constructed in two phases. And the conversion of an existing 2594 square foot single-family residence to administrative offices located at 1406 Sixth Street with consideration of the environmental effects.
It's done, you're done.
Oh, what? What am I doing here?
I just do a, some housekeeping really quick. Any applicants that are done with the first item, if you could leave the meeting? I want you to clear up the screen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open this to staff report. Staff?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Staff received an application for a plot plan for the proposed church on March 22nd, 2017. This project's been in for quite some time and, and has gone through several revisions in order to, uh, address concerns. There was a public notice that was placed in the press enterprise and property owners within 300 feet were notified of this public hearing. Staff has not received any written comments or calls from the public to date. Municipal code does allow churches in the Sixth Street overlay with the base commercial general zone subject to a plot plan. The property has a general plan designation of general commercial and a base zone of commercial general with the Sixth Street overlay. To the north is an existing residential tract with single-family residential zoning and general planning designation. To the south and east are commercial general in the Sixth Street overlay zone properties and also a general plan menus designation of general commercial with manufactured home sales and the Mountain View Hotel that is located to me. To the west is the American Town Center and some small multifamily residential units that are within the commercial general and multifamily residential zoning that are also within the Sixth Street overlay and have the same corresponding general plan menus designation. The subject site is 1.8 acres and it currently developed with an approximately 2,600 square foot two-story single-family home that's located on the northwest portion of the site. And the remainder of the property is unimproved. The project has been conditioned to prove, provide fully improved street furnishings along Sixth Street and American Avenue with curved better sidewalk and landscaping. Project does include two buildings that have a total square footage of 11,213 square feet. They'll be constructed in two phases. Phase one does include the conversion of the existing single-family home into administrative op, administrative offices and the construction of a 3,769 square foot church building and the required parking for phase one. Phase one will also include all of the off-site improvements. Phase two will convert the existing church that was built in phase one into classrooms. And it requests to construct an additional 4,850 square feet to accommodate a new sanctuary. Phase two will also complete the remainder of the onsite improvements related to parking and landscaping. Staff has worked very closely with the applicant regarding the architecture to make sure that the new building matched with the existing single-family home and, and that they were compatible. The applicant is also proposing to utilize cargo containers as part of their construction, so we wanted to make sure that, again, that the new structure was compatible with the existing home, so the colors and some of the materials were incorporated into the existing structure to make it. Project does propose for phase one requires a minimum of 61 parking spaces calculated on assembly area. This would be 2,600 full square feet. They are proposing to provide 62 spaces as part of phase one. Phase two will require a total of 75 parking spaces based on the fixed seat count. So the code requires one space for each four fixed seats. And phase two will provide its approximately 300 fixed seats for the site for the sanctuary. The applicant is proposing 106 spaces that also include five accessible parking spaces. Parking spaces that are located, are located on the north of the existing and proposed buildings and can access from two gated driveways proposed on American Avenue. The applicant is requesting extended hours of operation from 8 a.m. to midnight. Staff has conditioned the project for hours of operation between 8 a.m. to 11 p.m. due to the adjacent motel use and residential uses. Condition number 18 can be modified by the planning commission if you choose to grant the applicant's request to have extended hours of operation. The project does meet the criteria as an infill categorical exemption under CEQA and has been processed as such. The Beaumont Municipal Code does empower the planning commission to grant or deny plot plan applications and impose reasonable conditions upon granting of such permits. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and approve plot plan 2017-0017 subject to the attached conditions of approval and direct staff to prepare a notice of exemption for the applicant's court of attorney clerk. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have, uh, the applicant's architect on the line to answer questions as well.
Okay, now I'm gonna go to the commissioners. I'm gonna start with Patrick, and you have questions for staff?
Thank you, uh, just reviewing. Yeah, I don't know if this, this, yeah, it could be questions for staff or the, the applicant. The, I was looking at the conditions of approval, the um uh, any upgrades to fire suppression in the residence, which is not which is not listed, only new construction from what I, from what I read. And uh, on on page, let me go back to, I think it's page 57 on the conditions of approval. Sorry, let me go back to that. The, no, that one was already, that one's satisfied. The, actually, I don't know if that's the right page, but it was overnight activities or retreats was my, was my question, so it's, it's stated in here that the, you know, 11 p.m. is the, uh, cutoff time. But does that limit them to have any sort of um overnight, uh, event, you know, any, uh, retreats or anything like that that would require stay overnight? Would they have to apply for that or do these conditions just do not allow it at all?
So the condition as it's written does not allow it. Um, if we, the commission would like to modify that, we can allow for, you know, some facilities have midnight masses or lock-ins with, you know, their, their team congregation. So if we want to add some language in to allow for those types of um intermittent um overnight events, uh, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure if this was, you know, they appropriate time to ask. I mean, if, if the church does not need that, then, you know, why, why include it? But it'd be up to the commission to, to mod, to suggest that modification. Um, the other one was uh on uh traffic letting out after the services. Is there a, is it a right turn only or left turn only? I was a little, uh, concerned about that, or are we, are they gonna be allowed to exit, uh, both directions? And if I missed that part of the, uh, the, in the document, sorry, but that was my other concern that I had.
The head dog from engineer. Commissioner Stevens, can you repeat which street you were referring to or what, what entrance?
Sure, that was um sorry, I have a small mo, small monitor, so trying to scroll through this. That is had to be American, the, yeah. The, the two exits on American.
Yeah, they, they are in close proximity, but we don't anticipate any issue with the, the left out. Either right in, right out, left in, left out. Is that what you're asking? I apologize for that.
Yeah, I mean, if, uh, you know, the my, I'm sorry, my maps are taking a, a long time to load up right now. Um, so if I just go by memory of what I saw, um if one exits, you know, making the left and the other exits making the right, uh you know, is, is that gonna create some traffic problems or ri, more risk of collision? And if there was a right turn only or left turn only, uh condition on there to exit?
Yeah, I, I think that you, you can impose that condition. That would certainly, uh, help avoid that. But in, in the distance that they have, I, I didn't foresee any issue.
Okay.
So yes, you can make it more strict in, in their turning movements, however, uh there are certainly drop ways like that that exist throughout the city. Okay, wait, wait a minute here. He's kind of concerned that they're gonna come on to American Avenue. They can go right or go left. What's the city's position on this? I don't want to hear, well, they could have, would have, should have. What is your proposal? I have no objections to the way it's designed as it is. Okay, are you okay with that? Commissioner Stevens?
You know, it's uh sometimes when the, you know, people are trying, there's a mad rush to the parking lot to leave and I just think for that brief, you know, moment in time after the service is let in and, you know, new services are coming in. There just, there could be some issues there, um, with the people wanting, people, you know, exiting on the south entrance, making the right and, you know, and the, the north entrance, people making a left. So it just, it could create some, some traffic issues and people have to watch out and just be cautious if, if we're not gonna put any conditions on there, uh, to help mitigate that.
Okay, well, right now, it's, it's keep in mind, it's now's the time that we can put conditions on. You know, I, I, I asked the city engineer, he doesn't have a problem, but if you do have a problem and we seen that there is a problem with exiting, then now's the time to put those conditions on there so they can be resolved.
I'd like to see, or hear what the other commissioners have. Uh, any other questions on that and if, if there's more discussion or questions on this topic?
Okay, then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Martin. Paul, what do you think?
Uh, I have one question. No, and it doesn't pertain to the drives. Uh, there was a time when there were lots in that area that were not connected to the municipal wastewater system. Is that going to be addressed with, with this proposal?
Well, we got the city engineers sitting here. You're in the hot seat. I am, I am. They, they are conditioned to analyze all of the downstream facilities to see if there is capacity. Wait a minute, that didn't answer the question. Paul asked you if they're gonna be connected to the city sewer. We don't care about analyzing downstream commissions. Are they gonna be connected to the city sewer? They're conditioned to be connected to the city sewer. Okay, Paul, you got that?
Yes.
I don't mean to be blunt, but you know, let's, I don't want to hear the, the city, city hall speak here. I want to hear what these, answer the commissioners. Okay, Paul, they're gonna be on the, on the sewer.
Okay, fine.
Okay, we got that one. Any other commissioners got a concern here? Nathan, I know you will have.
Oh, you know, I always do. Um, couple of, uh, you know, questions, I, you know, kind of counted you a little bit there. I do appreciate the city hall speak. That's kind of my language too, so. Um, so it sounds like, you know, yeah, they're conditioned on there and if there's any deficiencies downstream that they would have to come up with some method to mitigate for uh, lack of capacity they have downstream. So, you know, I, I definitely understand what the city engineer is speaking to on, uh, on that. Um, as far as the, uh, the, the traffic, the right and right out, a, you know, Commissioner Stevens, I understand what it is that you're asking. I've done some traffic work for a large church, church in Riverside where, um, onsite traffic handling was a major concern on how to, to ship, uh, how to go between services with as many, with volume of people that they have coming in and out. Um, you know, I'm not sure it's something that we want to condition at this point because if you do have a service, we have 10 cars. Those two driveways are a problem as it becomes more, uh, in use. I can see where it may make sense to designate one of the entry points as an entrance and one as an exit, just for their own internal traffic handle. Um, you know, so I would, you know, if we're gonna look for a condition on that, my suggestion there would be to, uh, you know, condition uh, how would I, how would I phrase this? For the applicant to have, to prepare a, uh, internal traffic handling plan in the event that there are, the city determines that there are inadequacies with how the service is being transitioned. Uh, you know, in normal operations, they may not have any concerns, uh, and with the 62 spaces, you know, with two exit points, there's probably not going to be a huge amount of conflict, but you know, as you move into phase two or, um, you know, or grow beyond that, then, you know, potentially I could see. Uh, but maybe that's the way that I would kind of handle, I think, what you're, what you were getting at with your concern there.
Commissioners, if I can, if I can interject here, um, so this conditional use permit, I believe, has the same condition for review at the discretion of either the commissioner or the planning department. So after construction and the church is operational, if we hear from PB or from, um, you know, residents that there's been an issue, that there's traffic collisions, that there's, you know, problems, we can always bring it back and discuss a formal modification of conditions. that there's traffic collisions, that there's, you know, problems, we can always bring it back and discuss a formal modification of conditions. If you choose not to do anything at this point in time.
And that would probably be my preference at this moment is to just leave it as is. You know, as, as the church is getting started, there's going to be enough that they need to worry about with their membership versus a traffic handling for, you know, what really is a relatively small amount of parking spaces, you know, at that point. So it's a phase one condition. You know, I think if phase two comes up, it might be a little different. The, I did have some concerns with the request of midnight operations. You know, just as the, you know, the necessity, I appreciate that the parking is set back to Sixth Street. So we are pushing our architecture forward for that corridor. But with late operations, it is a single family. I am reluctant to authorize through conditions operating hours of midnight. But I am open to the idea of, you know, like an event permit or something like that. If there is, if there is something that comes up with midnight services, that, you know, that process be as, you know, quick and seamless as possible to be able to get you those on a, as needed basis versus just car block. And, you know, if it ends up where it's, you know, those are successful, it's not a issue at some point in the future. We may be able to come back and, you know, at one of the points we revisit, you know, look at that as, as a more long-term solution. So I would, I would kind of, that's my thought on the hours of operation. The questions, I do ask some questions for the applicant as well.
Let me go to the public hearing for that, Nathan.
Yeah, but Commissioner Kalindres has any comment or questions for staff, I'll refer to him.
Okay, I'm going to open, I'm going to open the public hearing this time at.
Chairman, you have Commissioner Stevens on the line.
I have who?
Commissioner Kalindres on the line also.
Oh, I, okay, fine, I can't see it, so. Okay, go ahead. I don't have you. Okay, while we're waiting, Commissioner Nathan, I, I like what you had to say and I like what Stevens had to say. But we've got to understand that maybe there will be a period of time during the year where services will go to midnight or something like, on special occasions. And I, I think staff needs to address that. I don't think they need to come back to this at the time. This is my comment. Okay, is he here yet? Commissioner Kalindres?
We have to go to an option to unmute, I think. We're not able to unmute, but there you guys.
Okay, hello?
This is all.
Hello?
Yes, sir, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, you're on.
Yeah, no questions at this time. I believe Nathan spoke on everything very clearly as far as traffic and times of operations.
Really? You trusted Nathan that much? Okay, I'm going to open the public, no, wait a minute, I'm not. I'm going to go to our city engineer for a comment.
Yeah, and a quick housekeeping measure on condition of approval number 53. Item C, that the minimum paving section shall be no less than, in no case shall the minimum paving, payment section be less than six, six inch AC over nine, it should be four inch over six. Or else that would be a very expensive American Avenue.
Yeah, that's, that's our serial standards.
Nathan, you got that?
Yeah, I got that. Four on six seems appropriate for American Avenue.
Okay, you're a resident engineer here. Okay, so now I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:17. And we, we have any public comments or?
No, we have no comments. How does it have anyone on the line?
No callers.
Okay, so I can close the public hearing now.
I'm the applicant's representative, we'd like to speak if we have an opportunity.
So the applicant is here, go for it.
Okay, great, thank you. It's a little hard to hear you, Chairman. So appreciate your comments tonight and thank you for having us here. It's been sort of a long road. You can see we're a 2017 application, so we're, we're thankful to get through the process. That's more on, on the church's side than yours. So appreciate the work that staff has done and for the support that we, that we hear echoed in your comments tonight. And, and for the, looking forward to your approval. I specifically like to thank the city engineer for that last comment. He just saved us a little bit of money, so we appreciate that, because the church is definitely trying to put this together and they're a growing church. So it's, it's a big step forward for them to migrate from their current situation to a full-size building. They purchased the property. They've, they've tried to take care of that property and now they're looking to improve it even further. I wanted to address the, the commissioners' comments. And then we did have a few comments regarding some of the conditions that we want to make a couple minor changes, as I could bring those up. But first, to the commissioners, Commissioner Patrick, I don't think fire suppression is required in the building that is existing in the existing house. So it's not currently the plan to sprinkle that building. It's an old and home, historic home. So it'd be difficult for us to accommodate that easily. But that's not currently in the plans. I don't think it's a requirement, but we are planning on sprinkling the facility and the church as it's brought forward. We would like to talk about the overnight or the hours, I should say. We're actually okay with the 11:00 PM. If there was a way that we could provide provision and as an ex commissioner, maybe we can add it to the condition of the hours that not more than so many times per year, an event would be overnight, which would allow us to sort of extend into that. What I would offer there is maybe four to six events per year max that would extend overnight for exactly what was said. Maybe there's a retreat or maybe there's a youth night or something like that. But we would, we would be okay with a condition that would limit the noise to the 11:00 PM. So anything kind of noisy, we, we want to be good neighbors, right? We want to be good neighbors in the sense of the traffic and in sense of the noise and sense of everything that's happening there. Because we're going to be a light to the community and a reach, an outreach to the community, rather than something that people point to and say, this is a really bad idea. So we actually want them to be thankful for us and that we can help them. So that would be one request of you that on the condition for the hours, which is for your support, condition number 18, that we would modify that to include some events during the year. As far as the traffic letting out in both directions, I too go to a large church. I actually don't attend CIC, but I know that in all cases, again, we want to be good, good stewards and good community members. And so, you know, guys that work on Sundays that can go out there and direct traffic and, and keep things calm and even gauge traffic to keep it in the parking lot before they get out on the street and sort of be watching for those families that are trying to bundle the kids up in the backseat and, and check their text messages as they pull out. Hopefully, we can, you know, minimize all of those kind of conditions and issues. So we would like to keep that as a full, full access for both driveways. And hopefully, the traffic on American is less during Sunday and, and be more of our issue to sort of deal with. To Commissioner St. Martin regarding the sewer connection, that was actually one of the items I brought up. I, I was a little surprised at the extent of that comment, only in the sense that if it's the lateral, hey, we're all good with it. If it's an upgrade to the water wastewater treatment facility plant for additional digestion, then I think we've got another problem. But I don't, I didn't, I didn't get a real warm and fuzzy out of that response from the city engineer that there is capacity. If, if, could someone eliminate that perhaps?
Reason I brought that up, there was a time when I, when I first moved to Beaumont, the line did not extend past American Street. And so that's why I'm asking the question whether the wastewater system has been extended past that line.
Well, we do show that there is sewer in American. And we're anticipating to be able to connect to that with capacity with no, quote, downline improvements. This kind of sounds kind of scary.
Right, yeah. But, you know, if, if the, you know, I see what the city is saying, you know, if there's a study that's been requested to be able to prove that. You know, especially given, you know, your primary times of operation, maybe off-peak from other times of operation. You know, just to ensure that, you know, I think that if we have an eight-inch sewer down there, that we're not going to put that, you know, with this additional flow, that doesn't put that pipe over capacity, I think, is what the city engineer is trying to get at.
Yeah, sounds like there's a concern in this area for the city.
I'll, I'll jump in here. There, I wouldn't say there's a concern, but the city has recently upgraded and expanded the wastewater treatment plant. So there's a whole variety of new considerations that we now make with, with development as it comes in to ensure that we have, again, adequate capacity based on what's entitled already and what the proposal is, as well as requirements for what and how things are discharged into the system. So with a use like yours, periodic and infrequent, with large gatherings, you know, the once a week or whatever, I don't anticipate that there would be an issue. Nonetheless, a request may be made for initially with your building plans that are submitted to have some plumbing calculations in there, some potential, you know, use, quantify the use that you anticipate based on, you know, the church and the number of, of seats or the number of people that you have in there to start. And then we would take a look at that and see how that fits in with the existing infrastructure that's there and how that moves from your location down to the sewer treatment plant. So.
That's actually with, with Beaumont, not with EMWD?
Yeah, we, we are not served by Eastern Municipal. EMWD is, is one of the standards we use, depending on what it is you're looking at. City of Beaumont provides sewer service and Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District provides your water service.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, hopefully that'll be okay. I require some prayer.
Off, off the cuff, again, just because you are off-peak, you know, it's, it's probably okay. But if there's any, any studies that come through, we'd just be able to prove that.
Okay, okay, great. So hopefully that then addressed Commissioner Smith's concerns regarding the internal traffic plan and the operations. We kind of talked about that and that was the other, was the city engineer. So if I could, I'd like to go to the couple of conditions that we had requested, that we would like to request some modifications to. The first is condition 14, it's fairly innocuous, but it says that it can't be transferred to another individual or entity. The only concern there is if, for some reason, we combined with another church and CIC became CICC or CCIC, something else, that we would want to be able to transfer the CUP to the, to the appropriate church. Right now, it's in Toro's name. And Toro's, Toro goes to church there, but, but Toro would like to move to Kentucky someday and, and he may not be around. So we'd like the ability to transfer that if we could.
What do you, Christina, on that one? The answer is re, re, question there.
Yeah, I, I think we anticipate that it would be, the CUP should be assigned to the church and not Mr. Psy, who has been working on this for a number, ever since I've been here anyway. And so we can go ahead and, and somehow note that in the file. Carol, I'm not sure what the, what the paperwork end of things will be. We oftentimes do have businesses that combine and/or ownership changes and whatnot. The CUP will run with the land as long as the use is not abandoned. So if it's a matter of paperwork, you know, oftentimes we reassign development agreements and other things like that. And there's a provision, so if we need a formal condition in there, we can do that. Most of the time with businesses, we amend the city's business license and that takes care of the, the formal paperwork. We, we really only have an issue if the use lapses and the conditional use permit expires.
Right.
So unless, Carol, unless I'm, I am forgetting something that the municipal code says.
I, I think you're correct, Carol said, don't go here.
That's correct. It's actually condition number 13.
Okay.
This permit will be for the benefit of the applicant whose name and permit was issued for its specific application. The permit shall not be transferable, transferable to any other individual location. I, I agree that this could be stricken because the code does allow for the transfer of ownership. And just, a new owner would just be required to do administrative planning. So I, I concur with the applicant that that could be removed and just follow the Beaumont municipal code.
Okay, there's, I have a, okay, you guys, pardon me, because I can't see everybody on different screens here. Okay, so Christina, we're okay with what Carol says, that we'll follow the Beaumont municipal code and strike item 13 on the issue.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. If, if the applicant's comfortable with striking it, even leaving it in there, I don't think would make an issue when we are the other, because, you know, we defer to the municipal code anyway, oftentimes. But I think striking it would give everybody a little more peace of mind to know that if there is a change of hands on, you know, as far as the church goes, that we could handle it administratively.
You've got to remember, folks, that I'm only seeing part of what you're doing. And at times, I don't, I don't know who's talking, so. Okay, so, yeah, okay, you're okay with what you just heard?
Yes, that would be, that would be great. If we could strike 13, that would be great. I also had on 24, I wasn't sure how that was different than 14. But basically, it says that the use or any changes not specifically permitted or not to be determined in substantial conformance by the community development director for this plot plan shall require submit and reapproval. They're, they're very similar in nature. It doesn't matter to me, I just didn't want it to be a conflict for you in your language.
So 14 speaks to the plot plan, which addresses the development of the site. 24 speaks to the uses taking place on the site. So think of 14 as the physical aspect of construction and site development. 24 addresses the uses such as, you know, you, you're operating as a church right now, but you want to add a daycare. So that would then constitute needing additional approvals or something like that. And if I can throw in, I know the question came up about the special events or temporary uses. I don't know if we need to include it as a condition or not. I can't remember what everybody suggested at this point with that. But we do have, we do have a provision for temporary use permits that the applicant can submit and it's handled just by planning staff and it gets sent around to the departments to let people know there is a special event taking place at a particular location. So that is an option if the commission chooses to, you know, somehow insert that, that we can request that the church provide or fill out a temporary use permit application. That would allow if there was a revival or some sort of event, you know, that was going to occur over multiple days. It gives us a mechanism to let the police department and fire department and other departments know, hey, there's something special going on at this particular location for, you know, a certain period of time.
Okay, I, I think that addresses a concern that Commissioner Smith had and Commissioner Stevens. So I think we need to somehow or another, and I'm, I'm not making the motion, but we need to insert that in the condition so that they have to come back to the planning department for that type of thing. You guys understand we're okay there? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, that makes sense of what Christina was saying and staff was saying, that it alerts police department, fire department that there is a two-day event or an event that's going to go through midnight or whatever, just to be aware of that. And, and I think it makes sense. It, it was a concern, you know, I'd like the idea of including four to six events. But then again, I like what staff was saying, that the public safety would be notified of special events like that.
Right, and the code does establish the process for temporary uses and it's a certain number every 45 days or something like that. So by default, it limits the number of events that can take place.
Hang on, Christina, I'm going to ask Commissioner Nathan, Smith, does that know where you wanted it to go?
That's, that, that, that's the same mechanism I was thinking of was essentially going through the TUP like that's administratively approved, you know, for special events. So that's not, that is the process I was considering.
And I didn't mean to cut you off, but I wanted to make sure that I got both the commissioners. And I didn't mean to cut you off, but I wanted to make sure that I got both the commissioners. We have a feeling that's where we're at. Okay, are there any other comments? Do I have any other comments?
No, there's nothing else that we had. We do appreciate your time and we look forward to being a community member and and supporting your community and and providing needed services for the area.
The only other question that I have is that we're talking about cargo containers. What's the deal with cargo containers?
Yeah, so the church's name that the pastor has selected is Contained in Christ. And so it's the idea that we are all in the body of Christ and as such, the idea of containment is a container. There are not actually real containers. They're they're going to be metal siding to make it look like containers, but they're kind of a little over scaled. We tried to work with the containers, but at the scale of the building, they they looked a little small and undersized. So it's really an architectural prefinished material. It's brand-new material and it will look like a container when we're done.
Okay, I'm not quite sure I understand what you're saying, but I will rely on staff to make that decision. So what I'm going to do at this time, if there's no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Now I'm going to look for a motion to approve plot plan PP two zero seven dash zero zero one seven. And yeah, and the existing and sequel line fifteen fifty with conditions. And I'm going to go to Nathan first because I know Nathan, you're going to put some conditions.
Well, you know, the ones that we spoke, the cleanup condition for the four on six. You know, I think that, you know, we have looked out there about the the TUP process for special events beyond the state operating hours on there. You know, before we make a motion, I just, you know, a couple of comments on there that, you know, I hope that you guys are successful and build phase two rather quickly. You know, as Sixth Street is kind of a key corridor in town, that is an area that we want to draw some real good architectural interest to and walkability and, you know, hopefully this will serve as an anchor to to do that. That being said, you know, ultimately, I hope you outgrow the space and have to, you know, pass it a little bit larger on the property even. You know, you know, as we're looking at that corridor and the densities you want on there. So that's that's kind of the success I wish for you. And that you're able to get to phase two rather quickly. But with those, the cleanup condition mentioned by the city engineer and then the condition for, you know, the you are extending really condition. It is already part of the city administrative process, but for the TUPs or events to go on later, I will move to approve as presented.
With conditions?
Well, the the TUP has the TUP process is already part of the administrative code for the city, so we don't need to condition for them to be able to utilize that.
Just making sure that nothing you wanted got left out. I'm going to go to Mr. St. Martin for a second or his thoughts?
No, I second this project, plot plan PP twenty seventeen dash zero zero one seven.
To 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 clarify, Mr. St. Martin, before you you complete that, subject also to the discussion points that we have. I didn't have any objections.
Subject to the discussion point as.
From the applicant, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I'll say in a second to approve PP two zero one seven dash zero zero one seven with conditions. And before I ask for a vote, I'm going to go to Christine and say, have we got everything we need to hook this thing in there?
Yes, sir, I believe we do. And if there's any question on any of the cleanup conditions, Carol and I will go back and watch this meeting again and make sure they're included. So I think we're good to go.
I just wanted to make sure that because there was a lot of thoughts and concerns here. So at that point, I have a first and a second.
Okay, I'll be on hold. Commissioner St. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindgren?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Stevens?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much looking forward to it.
Okay, now I'm going to turn this meeting over to our illustrious leader. Christina, what are we doing?
I believe it is time for community development directors' comments. And I I have some tonight, some exciting things to share with you guys. So I will start with first reminding you that we will have a special meeting on October twenty-seventh. It is to hear the it will be the first public hearing for the general plan update. The document is currently out for public review and comment. The comment period is open through October twenty-second. And we will then bring it to you on the twenty-seventh for your consideration and your forwarding of a recommendation to city council. The next meetings where it will be heard, city council has scheduled two meetings for the general plan update. That will be November third and November seventeenth. All of this information is on the website. If you have any communication from the public or anybody has questions, you can refer to the website or refer to either Carol or I to talk with them and and answer any questions. I know we've had some general plan update briefings with some of the commissioners. If I have not scheduled a meeting, a general plan briefing with you, which I think there's two of you that I have not, please let me know if you would like one. I think it's a great idea to sort of give you a broad overview of what you will be seeing on the general plan update when it comes to you. And that will be the only the only item on the agenda that night. And so we'll we'll provide our full attention to that to that item. The second thing I'd like to let you all know is on the at the council meeting on October twentieth, we will be awarding a contract to well, recommending awarding a contract to begin the housing element update process. So as we wrap up the general plan element or the general plan update, the housing element, we were into or getting ready to start the six-cycle arena. And I know we've had lots of discussions over the last couple of years about all the housing things that are going on in the state of California. So this will be an exciting process. I think it will. The general plan update is laying a great foundation for the city to have some opportunity to provide a variety of housing types at all different levels and in lots of different places throughout the city to help the city achieve what the state has required, but also to bring some new and exciting type of products into the city. But I'm excited about the consultant. I'm excited about the process. And so we'll be coming to you guys with more information on that once the contract is awarded by city council. And that that will be a one-year process. The housing element update has to be completed and to the state for certification by October twenty twenty-one. So it will, unlike the general plan update, it will be a much quicker process and I think move pretty succinctly through the various phases that we have to get through. And then the last item that I have to talk to you guys about tonight is last year, we were awarded a grant from SCAG, from the Southern California Association of Governments, to do a parking strategy study for the city of Beaumont. And again, this is something else that we'll tie in with the general plan update, the downtown area plan and some of the other things that are going on in the city right now. And so we we've kicked that off. We're about halfway through the process. On October twenty-eighth, which is the day after your special meeting, I believe we are going to have a via Zoom sort of a stakeholder and community meeting to talk with the consultant so they can let us know what type of information they found about our current parking situation in the downtown and a couple other places in the city that they've looked at. And then to talk and really to hear from the stakeholders and from community residents on, you know, what some of the concerns are, what they would like to see and what not. So I will be pushing some information out hopefully in the next couple of days to get that out on the on the city social media and on the website, but also to you guys. You're welcome to call in and listen or participate if you'd like to participate. I know Commissioner Colleen Dress has some interest because he's got a business downtown. So we're looking forward to hearing, you know, his perspective as a business owner. Obviously, we're including chamber members and other downtown businesses we've identified. But if you yourselves would like to participate or if you know anybody that you think would be interested in participating or you would like me to include, feel free to email. Email me their information or give me a call and let me know who you'd like me to reach out to. If we haven't already done so, we'll add them to the list and make sure they get a notification of what's happening. And so once we do the community outreach portion of the parking strategy study, the consultant will take the information back and it will culminate in a a usable document that we have that we can utilize with the general plan update, the downtown area plan, and ultimately the housing element update as all of these things will mesh together and hopefully give us some tools to engage in some future future projects citywide, but also in the downtown, because that seems to be where a lot of our focus is right now. It also gives us a good foundation for doing some grant writing to get some projects going as well. So that's that's it for planning right now. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. If you like information on anything else, just let me know.
Okay, what I have is a comment. Over the last couple of months, I've been dealing with local contractors who somehow or another found out that I knew somebody in the city. And they were had various complaints about inspection processes, plan check processes or general information. I must tell you that I referred them to Christina and her staff. And all I got back was positive positive input from the contractors. They said, we have dealt with the city of Beaumont for a long time. We're finally getting the answers that we've sought for a long time. So Christina, your staff, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, besides that, I keep giving them your home number.
I don't even have a home number, so I don't know what number you're giving them.
I offer you positive stuff.
You mean the number here because this is where I still am for hour twelve today, right?
But you're doing so well and the contractors and the community appreciates your effort.
I appreciate that. And I know staff is working hard, the building department, the fire marshal's office for inspections, Carol, you know. It's it's been a process getting everything overhauled and fine-tuned and then COVID happened and that was a whole nother, you know, process that we had to figure out like overnight. But I think hopefully we're we're stabilized and everybody's getting service. But that goes for anybody. I know Commissioner Tinker or Chairman Tinker does reach out to me quite a bit for things, but you guys all know, if you need anything, you can call Carol or I, regardless what department it it's regarding, we can make sure we get.
Contractor that's an out-of-state contractor, he says, you know, I called her up and she knows the difference between electrical permit and a plumbing permit. And she said, yeah, okay, you know, they're not used to dealing with somebody that knows the difference. So it's been real helpful with Carol and you and your staff. And when there's a hangup, you guys have fixed it. And I'm telling you, all I get is positive feedback from these contractors. So thank you. And if that's it, this meeting is done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, guys.
Night.